Good evening and welcome to the February 16th meeting of the Lake Forest City Council. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Honorable James Cowie.
Here.
Alderman Grumhouse.
Here.
Alderman Novit.
Here.
Alderman Widman is absent, Alderman Gultra is absent, Alderman Marsh.
Here.
Alderman Hanrahan.
Here.
Alderman Louvi.
Here.
Alderman Palmer.
Here.
Seven present, two absent, Mr. Mayor, we have a call.
Thank you both, will you please join me in the pledge allegiance? Our first item on the agenda this evening is reports of city officers, number one being comments by mayor. I do have about three comments I'd like to make this evening. The first comment I would like to read is a resolution of sympathy for former Alderman Alexander Glover. And many of you that are here with me on council in years past, and certainly Bob Kylie and Vic and the rest of us, remember Al is much a fixture of our public meetings. He was here at every meeting for countless years. And he was also the individual that carried the American flag in every Lake Forest Day for over fifty years. So, I'm gonna read a resolution to Al. Whereas, Al Glover was a highly valued and respected resident of Lake Forest who gave inspiring of his time and talents for the enrichment of the citizens of this community. Whereas, Al Glover served in the Lake Forest City Council as First Ward Alderman with distinction integrity from May 1969 until May 1975. And whereas, while in office he served as a member of the Public Safety and Welfare Committee, the Public Works Buildings Committee, the Schools, Parks and Recreation Committee, Finance Committee, and whereas, Al Glover was strongly committed to our country and community, serving in the United States Navy during World War II, and as an active member of the American Legion, the King Clark Post 264. Whereas, Al Glover was instrumental in establishing and promoting the American Legion Flag Program in Lake Forest, and carried the American flag in every Lake Forest Day and Memorial Day Parade for over fifty years. And whereas, the passing of Al Glover on February 4th, 2010, has taken from the community a highly regarded citizen and friend, now therefore be resolved that the city council of the city of Lake Forest, in session on February 16, 2010, has hereby expressed its deep regret and sincere sympathy to the members of the family of Al Glover. Be it further resolved that this resolution be spread upon the minutes of the city council, and a copy hereof duly signed by the mayor be presented to the family of Al Glover. And entertain a motion for approval of this motion. So moved. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you. And, Bob, I hope you will deliver that to Al's family. Thank you. The next comments I have this evening are in regards to train safety. As many of you are aware, we've had some very tragic events here in the last few months. The last event that we had was another young gentleman from Lake Forest Academy who was struck and killed by an Amtrak train. And in the regard that the city has been working on, obviously a number of issues and initiatives before this tragedy, we wish to continue in our efforts to bring train safety to the public's mind. And in that regard, I have asked that our city manager contact the school superintendent from District 67 and District 115, Harry Griffith, to please work with us and all the local private schools as well, to go back and really start anew in an effort to get the public awareness out again for, you know, the whole train safety issue. And we have, obviously, a number of, you know, only track services in our community, but from both freight, metro, and Amtrak. And there is numerous, obviously numerous crossings. We have both vehicular crossings and we have pedestrian crossings. And the idea again is to bring back the public awareness. I know as, when we were kids, it was always drilled into our heads all kinds of, you know, stop, look, and listen. I think that we want to go back again. And Harry Griffith, the superintendent, has told us that he is, certainly he will embrace this, and that we want to extend that to the public schools as well and start anew. I think this is again, just one area that we're working on, but it's certainly of grave importance to the community and to all the communities around us that we continue to do this, so we do not have any future accidents. You want to add anything to that, Bob? And in that same regard, and this is certainly not an easy thing to do for me, and it's not an easy thing to do for the gentleman that I'm gonna introduce here in a moment, but we have Dennis Johnson here, came a long way from out of town. He is the father of Tracy Spradlin, who was struck and killed by an Amtrak train on December 10th at the Telegraph Road Station. And Dennis has been extremely gracious to be here this evening and to work with our community to try to get this awareness out, and to work with us and to help us, again, prevent any future accidents, and to try to make this as safe and accessible crossing and facility as we can. So, I would welcome Dennis if you want to come on up and we thank you for being here this evening.
And that my daughter made a mistake. She paid for it immediately and permanently. Her pain is over. For the rest of the family, the pain. Is there every day? And the point of the comments that I want to make is not necessarily the folks here in the room, but the folks that are looking through that camera and will be watching this either this evening, or tomorrow, or the next day. For the folks that want to run and try to beat that train, your issues will be over with immediately also. Think about what you're doing to the rest of the family. I had to call my two sons the night that Tracy died to tell them they lost a sister. That was rough. I hear their voices often, and their reaction. And whatever the circumstances were that caused Tracy to go out and cross the tracks, we will probably never know for a fact, but we do know that it was a fatal mistake. It's not worth it, folks, don't do it. You don't want to have to tell your children that their mother or father has been killed. You don't want to tell somebody that your spouse has been killed. You don't want to tell your children that their sibling has been killed. And you don't want to be in the situation that I'm in and the other members of the family, that Jason, that her son Cameron is in, of we have to live with this for however many years that we're gonna be here. It's not an easy thing to do. It's tough, it's painful. The thought that I had later that night after she was killed was, I don't want to be doing this. Very honestly, with all due respect, I don't want to be here tonight doing this. I would hope that it hadn't happened. But whatever I can do, whatever little bit that I can help Lake Forest move forward and prevent somebody else from doing it, whatever Jason can do, whatever we can do, we want to do this. I live in a different state, I don't want to dictate what Lake Forest does, I don't even want to pretend that I think I can dictate what Lake Forest does. But I do want to say, I will work with you and do whatever I can, whether how big or small. And as I explained with Mr. Kylie this afternoon, I don't care who gets credit for whatever great things come out of this. But the folks riding the trains and using the stations have to pay attention. They need to hear it from somebody not reading the story in the paper that somebody died. But I think they have to hear it from the people that are left behind. The pain, discomfort that is there all the time. This bad dream is not going to go away for me. It's not going to go away for Jason, or for Cameron, or for anybody else. It's there, it's permanent, and it burns like the dais. Thank you for your time.
Again, I don't think any of us sitting here can understand, can feel how difficult it is for you to be here tonight and to come this way and tell us what you just did, but I do want you to know that we, you know, we take this very seriously, we're working at it, and we appreciate your commitment to helping us, and we'll do everything we can to make sure that, obviously, this doesn't happen again in the future. And I thank too the rest of the family for being here. That's, again, you were here a few weeks ago, and I know how difficult it was, and it's, it doesn't make it easier today, and we understand that. But we do appreciate all your efforts, we do want to work with you, and we're hoping that we can do everything as we will possible to make sure this does not happen again.
The only thing, Mr. Mayor, members of council, that I would mention is that the staff met earlier today with Mr. Johnson, as indicated that he is going to be an active, long-distance participant on the newly established Transportation Enhancement Safety Committee. And through the wonders of either watching you on video as we webcast your council meetings or participating in committee meetings in the future, I think to the extent that he's able to approach people he knows out in Nevada, we are approaching state and federal legislators here in the state of Illinois. We'll continue to work collaboratively and see if we can make something happen here, not two, five years from now, but as quickly as we possibly can.
Thank you, Bob. Our next item on the agenda this evening is comments by city manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. As you know, we try once a month to ask one of our local institutions to come in and brief the city council on something that's going on within that organization. And we're honored this evening that we have a very prestigious organization and one that I think everybody in this room has participated with or in at one time or another, and that's Lake Forest Open Lands, that's contributed so much to this community. So, I'm not sure Jill, who's doing the presentation, but while she's getting that ready, I should mention that they are also the newest tenant out at Elawa. They're officially at a tenant out there right now, so welcome.
Thank you. Thanks so much for inviting us here tonight. As many of you know, Lake Forest Open Lands is a small land trust. Here in Lake Forest, we preserve over eight hundred acres of open space in addition to working with the city to help manage some of the city-owned properties like McCormick Ravine and the Bike Path in front of Fort Sheridan. So, in addition to the preservation of open space, we participate in environmental education programs. Right now, we just finished our winter school programs, believe it or not, kids came out in the winter and persevered through snow and ice and loved every minute of it. We annually get three thousand two hundred children coming through field trips on our preserves, both public and private schools in Lake Forest. We're beginning to prepare for our spring programs starting in April. We also offer a lot of public programs, adult natural history courses, and programs for four and five-year-olds called Little Truckers. Again, we've got a couple programs coming up in the spring, one with regards to native landscaping in your own backyard, and another Wildflower Ravine Walk. Recently, we began an outreach program with two partner schools. One is Oak Terrace in Highwood, and the other is a high school in Waukegan called Saint Martin de Pare. Through community support and very generous partners, we are able to offer after-school programs and camp programs for low-income youth. In the past year, we had a hundred of the students come through camps and after-school This year was our seventh nature preserve opening, and it is out on Wesley Road. It's across from our West Skokie Nature Preserve. Currently, the property is called the Dickinson Property, and here we have undergone a huge amount of habitat restoration, and it's been, it's been very successful, and we've had a lot of volunteer hours at this particular site. In this picture, they're removing the non-native invasive buckthorn, which many of you may have had experience with. Like you had mentioned, we are expanding our programming out to the Middle Fork Farm campus in the Elawa buildings, and this is where we're gonna begin basing our middle school and high school programs. And I have got program developer Suzie Hoffman here today, and she's gonna talk a little bit more about those programs. We also are gearing up for camps. In previous years, we've had camps just for fourth and fifth graders, but this year we're expanding due to popular demand for third grade and sixth grade. So, enrollment is now, and camps are filling up, so if you are interested, sign up today because spaces are few and far between. We also offer in the summer an intensive ecology internship program. It is for upper-level high school and college students. It is a paid internship. The interns are working side-by-side with our land managers four days a week, and then on the Friday, they go on field trips or listen to guest speakers, and it's a really well-rounded program, again, very competitive. We often get returning interns year after year. It's a wonderful, wonderful program. In addition to our education in our habitat restoration, we're well-known for the events that we hold. Our signature event, Bagpipes and Bonfire, in the fall out at Middle Fork Farm. Our upcoming fundraiser in March is our Spring Into Auction, which will be held on March 13th. In the spring, we also will have a native plant sale and our Dog Day, which a lot of our preserve users are dog owners, and we're big fans of dogs, so we celebrate dogs too. And now Suzie Hoffman is gonna come up and talk more about our new education initiative for this year, the Center for Conservation Leadership.
Mr. Mayor, city council members, Mr. Kylie, thanks for having us tonight. I'm here to introduce you to our newest educational offering, which is called the Center for Conservation Leadership. The mission for the Center for Conservation Leadership, which is a mouthful, we call it CCL, is to create the next generation of conservation leaders who understand and care for the environment. As we believe that conservation leaders in the future will come from all walks of life and all backgrounds, we are seeking highly motivated students from not just Lake Forest, but our surrounding communities as well, Round Lake, Waukegan, North Chicago, Highwood, Highland Park, and Deerfield. We're going to involve them in a collaborative educational and experiential in-depth certification program. The goals of the program are to increase the students' knowledge and their understanding of the environment and ecology, to enhance and enrich existing school curricula, to empower students by providing them with service opportunities, to guide students with individual mentors, and provide internship opportunities in environmental organizations throughout the Chicago region, and to develop, through these other goals, future conservation leaders with an understanding of environmental justice. The Center for Conservation Leadership provides a three-week progressive summer program in environmental studies, team-building and leadership skills, service opportunities, workshops and guest lectures throughout the year, field trips, a mentoring program, and as I said, internships with partner and other organizations. The program is open to thirteen- to sixteen-year-old students who have a demonstrated interest in the environment, ability to handle some academic rigor, a desire to give back to their community and to others, and have exhibited leadership skills. The pilot program this summer begins this summer with a three-week summer experience. The pilot program also includes a service opportunity and school year workshops and field trips. Our summer focus for 2010 in our pilot program is water ecology. We're gonna spend three weeks up at the Conserve School in northern Wisconsin, which is on the UP border. While there, the students are going to undergo an in-depth study of regional watershed, they're gonna work on their leadership and team-building skills, and they'll do field study in aquatic ecology. In addition to working at Conserve, they'll also be on a research vessel in Lake Superior and having experiences that they might not have had any other way. It's a pretty unique program. These are examples of some of the things that kids will be doing. While they're residing at Conserve School, they will be overseen by expert and experienced counselors, people who work in the environment and are very familiar with the area. They'll live in up-to-date and fully-equipped dorms, so there'll be very little camping. The daily life will include active outdoor learning as well as recreational time. All supplies are provided so that students from all different backgrounds don't have to worry about those aspects of the summer program, and all of our counselors will be trained in CPR, water, and wilderness safety, so they'll make sure that the kids are in a safe environment. When they complete the summer program, CCL will work with the students to identify service opportunities in their communities and schools. Obviously, service opportunities enhance their leadership skills and reinforce the environmental science that they learn and give back to their community. These will be things like helping the forest preserve translate some of their materials into Spanish for greater accessibility, to work on beach and park cleanups in communities, to work as docents to help teach younger students, general outreach service components. We will be working with the students to identify those things and seeking mentors so that the students will have someone to talk to and report to as they complete their Also during the school year following the summer program, we're going to offer a series of hands-on workshops and field trips, which will deepen the social connections that the students have made during the summer program and expose them further to environmental issues and careers. So, we will have, one of these workshops will probably be offered each month, and students will pick a number of them to go to because we know they have very busy schedules. The workshops will be things like working with an environmental engineer on wetlands reclamation, it will be working with an environmental architect who's designing a green building, it can be working with someone who is doing photography, nature photography, food sustainability and food sources, lots of different exciting options for the kids, canoeing on the Chicago River. There's a myriad of workshops that will be offered for these kids. On completion of the one-year certificate program, the students will continue at the Center for Conservation Leadership and pursue available internships and experiences with our partner organizations. Students will be assigned a mentor to help them through this process. We'll also have additional educational opportunities for those kids who aren't quite old enough to have an internship. And if you have any students who you know that might be interested, please send them our way. We think it's a very exciting opportunity for kids in our community and in other communities nearby. Similarly, if you're interested in mentorship opportunities or have internship possibilities, we'd love to hear from you as well, because we'd like to offer as wide an array of these options for the kids as possible. We're really excited about our program and hope you are too, and look forward to hearing from you all. Thanks so much for having us tonight.
Thank you.
Thanks Suzie. I think the first question that is on everybody's mind though is, after seeing all those slides, is when are you gonna do something for elected officials in Lake Forest to go to camp?
That's right. We'll have a special room for you to visit.
I think so.
With no tents. We don't want tents. That looked pretty nice, didn't it? It's not like when we went to camp. That's true. That completes my report for this evening.
Thank you, Bob. Our next item on the agenda this evening is comments by council members.
Just have two quick things to say, and I promise I'll make them fast. First, I just wanted to thank, last Thursday, I was invited to go to the kickoff event for the 2010 Relay for Life. Last year, this event raised eighty thousand dollars, which was donated to the American Cancer Society. It was held June last year, and in this year, with a more challenging environment, I just want to encourage members of the community to donate to sponsor participants in the program. The program has high school kids, college kids, and other members of the community. It goes to a good cause, and again, it's a challenging environment. I hope everyone assists them. Second and last thing, and I'll make this fast, as I was leaving my home to attend city council, I turned on the Olympics, which is fascinating. A member of the US Women's Hockey Team had just chipped in three assists, and she grew up in Lake Forest, was a member of Winter Club, skated circles around me when she was about five, Hillary Knight. Hear that name during the course of the Olympics, she grew up here, so congratulations to her and her family. That's it.
Thank you, Alderman Novit. Any other comments by council members? The next item on the agenda is council committee reports. And the first item is a finance committee report, which is a consideration of ordinance amending the Lake Forest City Code relating to the parking fees at Forest Park Beach. This is first reading, and will be presented this evening by Alderman Grumhouse.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At the finance committee meeting earlier this evening, we had one item on the open agenda, which was this consideration of this ordinance. And the city council approved the increases in the vehicle license fee from seventy-five to eighty-five dollars. At our December meeting, it then became necessary to increase the Forest Park Beach parking permit fee price because it historically has always been for the same amount. So, you know, this ordinance is designed to go ahead and do that. I'd like to get a motion to grant first reading of the ordinance.
So moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I guess we'll take that on final reading at the next council meeting. We had another item on the agenda tonight, but we're gonna table that for a future meeting, March first meeting. So, that's it from the finance committee.
Thank you, Alderman Grumhouse. Our next item on the agenda this evening is a legal committee report. This will be presented by Legal Committee liaison, Alderman Bob Palmer.
The Lake Forest Police Department has been collaborating with other Lake County law enforcement agencies in developing a model social hosting ordinance. This ordinance would provide consistency and clarity from community to community in addressing the problem of underage drinking and the hosting of parties where alcohol is made available to minors. The proposed ordinance in your packet was presented to the legal committee for its consideration at its October 22nd and January 28th meetings. The attached ordinance has been recommended for approval by the legal committee, the police department is supported by lead. The model social host ordinance contains a number of components. The ordinance applies to anyone regardless of relationship to the underage person. This includes parents, guardians, and other related or unrelated persons. Often, parties are thrown by other underage persons. The ordinance provides for enforcement regardless of the place in which the gathering is held. Traditionally, the laws apply it only to a residence, and then only to a person who is responsible for the residence. Many gatherings were held in other locations to avoid the consequences of current laws. So, this ordinance includes residences, private or public property such as parks or forest preserves, or any other conveyance. Conveyances include motor vehicles, trailers, watercrafts, or containers. The ordinance includes the use of illicit drugs in addition to alcohol. The ordinance provides for protection of the person hosting the gathering if that person contacts the police for assistance to terminate the gathering. Often, a large gathering starts as a small gathering, a few friends, they in turn tell other friends, and so on until the gathering is out of control. The ordinance does not require the person responsible for facilitating the gathering to be present. The ordinance does not apply to legitimate religious ceremonies or to parents providing alcohol only to their children in their own home as allowed by all my state law. alcohol only to their children in their own home as allowed by Illinois state law. The ordinance provides for minimum fines to ensure violators will understand the severity of offense. These fines are increasing, however. I mean, they're graduated upward, as I recall. The recommended action tonight is to waive first reading, and if desired by the city council, grant final approval to an ordinance amending Chapter Four of the City Code relating to a social host ordinance. And if there are any questions, I think Deputy Chief Burmeister is here. He made the presentation to the legal committee.
Well, I believe this is an important ordinance to get together to coordinate Lake Forest with the other communities. I've worked with lead over the years, and I think that this shows that there's a responsibility to those that are providing the location and supposed to be in charge, and that they're in charge really whether they're there or not with their homes. So I'm all for this, and I'll make a motion to waive first reading.
I just had a comment or question, and the ordinance itself and its spirit, I appreciate that there was one section in Section Three, the final provision, which can be kind of an opt-out provision, and that one section I kind of questioned. And it would allow someone who knows they're going to go out of town and not be present at their home to call the police, to say, "I'm not going to be at my home." Therefore, if they call ahead of time to the police to warn that they're not going to be present, they're not part of this, which leads to a question of control. And I was just curious why that provision was included.
It's really, if you're going to go out of town and you don't know what could be done with your residents, it's to basically give the police warning to watch it.
Yeah, and I'm all for the option of warning the police, but then again, it's avoiding or can facilitate avoiding responsibility by making a preemptive phone call to the police. That was the only thing I questioned in the ordinance.
Again, if the person intends to try to go out of town and not be responsible, I don't think the ordinance would exempt him from responsibility if that was in fact his plan. I mean, it's like form over substance here.
Yeah, that's the only question I had on it.
So if you had any ideas about next time you're going on vacation?
Oh, I don't. I think it's wise to make a preemptive phone call, but to make that phone call itself an option to avoid any type of responsibility under the ordinance, I think it should be a consideration if someone's out of town, but not accept them from responsibility under the ordinance. And that was, from my perspective, the only weakness I saw. Maybe Victor might have some comment on it. I'm not sure.
I'd be happy to address that. Thank you, Alderman Novit. If you look at the provision, it actually requires the person to take reasonable steps. If you look at the definition of reasonable steps, it says reasonable steps may include, and it lists them, but it doesn't necessarily mean that in every instance you can simply take that reasonable step. This is not intended to be a dump and run, if you will. This is intended to take reasonable steps. That's the definition. That's the standard. It does identify things that in proper circumstances, I think, are reasonable steps. But I think that there is a measure, and the legal committee did talk about this to some degree, that there is a measure of judgment to be implemented or to be used in implementing this. And one of the other aspects of this that comes into play is how it would be administered if a ticket is actually issued. We do have the expectation that this will be going through our local adjudication process. So there's both greater responsibility placed on those who might be hosting these, but also greater local control as to how any violations are addressed. One other thing that you may note is that in the penalties section, which is Section, Article Seven, Section Four, Four-27 on page five, it's page 28 of the packet, the fines are heftier than what we find in most of our ordinances. Ordinarily, we don't have more than a $750 fine per violation. These fines are reflective of those which are in the Illinois liquor code and are ones that we use for licensees of liquor establishments. We've imported those into this one in part to make sure that there is sufficient incentive that people do abide by the ordinance.
Again, so long as it's not just a mere opt-out option or avoidance option.
And I think that it's expected that if someone takes any of the identified steps, that that may be something that will protect them. But if the circumstances show that it was a perfunctory call as a, you know, safe harbor, I don't think that that's going to hold water in this instance.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, that's the end of my question.
Back to motion to waive first reading.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
opposed?
Motion to approve.
Second.
If you have any public comment. Thank you, Mayor, City Councilman, and Mr. Kylie. I'm Betty Frank Bailey. I'm the Director of the Speak Up Prevention Coalition and the Executive Director of Lead. And very quickly, I just want to thank, on behalf of all of our coalition members, Chief Berger and Deputy Chief Burmeister and the rest of our law enforcement team for helping to bring this to fruition tonight and to encourage you to approve it. This social host ordinance is one part of a very comprehensive strategy that's underway for our community coalition to address preventing underage drinking, significantly reducing it, as well as other drug use for Lake Forest, Lake Bluff, and Nullwood. And I think it's going to serve as a significant reminder to parents and other adults that it's not only illegal but also harmful and irresponsible to provide alcohol to minors. And I would also like to encourage you to watch in the next months for a multimedia campaign that will include the message, "Parents Who Host Lose the Most," that will be part of complementing this ordinance approval. So thank you.
Yes, sir. Come on up to the podium. Please state your name and address.
Thank you, Your Honor. My name's Abe Goldsmith. I live on Lewis, 141 East Lewis. I had a couple of things. First of all, I'd like to report, again, deterioration of Buena from Old Elm North for about six blocks. The street is crumbling.
We're taking care of that on this ordinance right now, so.
Beg your pardon?
The opportunity to address the public will be coming up next, so if you can hold your thoughts for a few minutes. We're still on.
Oh, I thought you asked for public comments. I'm sorry.
Just give us a couple of minutes.
Beg your pardon?
We'll be right back with you. Thank you. Have any other comments on this ordinance? No. So we have, we already approved the motion for first reading.
We have a motion in a second, so now all we do is vote.
Now we have to say.
Alderman Grumhouse.
Aye.
Alderman Novit.
Aye.
Alderman Morse.
Aye.
Alderman Hanrahan.
Aye.
Alderman Luby.
Aye.
Alderman Palmer.
Aye.
Six yeas, no nays, and motion carries.
Thank you, Beth. Now we can get to your opportunity for the public to address the city council and non-agenda issues. Not at all. Thank you.
We were confused, too.
We don't get paid.
I want to get back to Buena. I want to go back to the condition of Buena. It's deteriorating terribly north of Old Elm for about six blocks. I also want to discuss the deterioration of Old Elm west of 41, including the railroad tracks. I think that the railroad should be brought in and fixed those tracks. It's bumpity bumpity bump, and there's no reason for it. I think it's very dangerous. Last thing on my agenda is I attended a meeting a couple of weeks ago regarding the pension problem and wrote a letter to the mayor. I don't, I hope he got it because he didn't come back. And the referendum passed, and the more I thought about that referendum, the more I thought it was just passing the buck. As a home-rule community, I think we've got to solve our own problems. I mean, Springfield's got enough problems that they can't solve. I think we ought to address our own problems and try and solve them and not pass the buck to Springfield. Thank you, Your Honor.
I'd make one comment on the pension. We would love to solve our own problems. We can't solve our own problems. The pension is a state-mandated issue, and there is nothing we can do about it. Believe me, we, I have talked to our attorney about anything and everything we can try and do to fix the pension problem, and short of coming up with some great investments that would fall under the, you know, be allowed, there's nothing we can do. So, you know, it's a state problem. Our hands are completely tied.
I hear you. Thank you.
And I agree with you on Old Elm. I actually was driving across the train tracks on Old Elm yesterday to pick up one of my kids, and the road was terrible. I know we did have pavers out there. There were, there were city workers out there trying to fill in some potholes, but.
Well, let me double-check since the city engineer is in the back. I'll ask him to come forward because he's extremely relevant for this conversation here. If he could give us the answer, because I think Old Elm west of 41 is scheduled to be done this summer, correct?
Yeah, that's the good news. We're doing the three streets, Field Court, Field Drive, and Old Elm. The bad news, or it's not really bad news, but as far as Buena, we're going to test it along with all the streets this year. It's just a new five-year program.
So the good news is Old Elm will be repaved this summer?
Right, and Buena will be evaluated.
Okay, so there's, there's some good news for you. If we could just, if we could fix the pension before we would. Thank you for your comments this evening. Any other comments from the public? No, hearing none, we'll move on to the next item on the agenda, which is the consent agenda. We have two items on the agenda this evening. We have approval of the minutes from the January 1st, 2010 regular meeting, and we have approval of a resolution authorizing a modification to the intergovernmental agreement by and between the Village of Lake Bluff and the City of Lake Forest. Questions, comments, or discussion on those two items?
Motion to approve. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Alderman Grumhouse.
Aye.
Alderman Novit.
Aye.
Alderman Morse.
Aye.
Alderman Hanrahan.
Aye.
Alderman Luby.
Aye.
Alderman Palmer.
Aye.
Six yeas, no nays, and motion carries.
Thank you, Beth. Our next item on the agenda this evening is ordinances, and the first item is a consideration of a report and recommendation from the Zoning Board of Appeals to grant a variance from the rear and corner side yard setback requirements at 154 Wooded Lane. This is first reading, and if desired by the city council, final approval, presented by our senior planner, Peter Cluton. Peter?
The zoning board considered this request for an addition at 154 Wooded Lane, which is in the Northmore Terrace subdivision, which is located west of Sheridan Road at the northeast corner of Highview Terrace and Wooded Lane. Zoning Board considered a variance to allow an addition that would, two additions on this house. One would be, one is a second-floor addition of a bedroom space. The second is a covered entry on an existing side entry to the residence. In this case, the particular hardship, the practical difficulty in providing this bedroom space on the second floor in a manner that doesn't encroach into the setback areas as a result of the property owner's desire to provide bedrooms, an additional bedroom, to accommodate their growing family. In this case, there are no practical alternatives for adding this second-floor bedroom that wouldn't encroach into the setback area. The alternative might be an addition on the rear of the residence. This would require either a bedroom on the first-floor level or, which doesn't address the petitioner's objectives to provide a bedroom space for their child, or to create a full two-story addition on the back of the house, which is more expensive and more space than the petitioner's desire as well. This is a house that has an existing nonconformity. The house encroaches into the corner side yard setback and the rear yard setback. That's a result of changes to the zoning code that have occurred over time as the city has amended the zoning code and not a result of any action by the current or a former property owner. The two variances that are requested for the bedroom space is to allow this addition to be set back approximately 29 feet from the property line, and the second addition is the open porch, which would be set back approximately 36 feet from the north property line. The zoning board did unanimously recommend approval of both variances, so if you choose to do so, it would be appropriate to waive first reading and grant final approval. If you have any answering questions?
Thank you, Peter. Any questions?
I guess there were two residents who expressed objections about the height, and then the height was lowered. Did that make the residents happier, or were they still protesting?
That's correct. There were, there were some concerns expressed by two adjacent property owners for the height of, this is the addition on the front of the house that's proposed. The original proposal had this ridgeline rather than meeting the ridgeline of the existing house. It was several feet above that ridgeline. There was concern expressed for that height, and as a result of that, the property owners did reexamine the plan and have lowered the height to be at the level that was not objectionable.
Well, I'd make a motion to waive first reading.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to accept. Second.
Roll call, please.
Alderman Grumhouse.
Aye.
Alderman Novit.
Aye.
Alderman Morse.
Aye.
Alderman Hanrahan.
Aye.
Alderman Luby.
Aye.
Alderman Palmer.
Aye.
Six yeas, no nays, and motion carries.
Thank you, Beth. Our next item on the agenda is an ordinance amending Chapter Nine of the City Code regarding high-impact traffic permits. This is for final approval. It'll be presented by the city engineer, Ken Magnus.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. We discussed this ordinance at the committee whole meeting last month as well as the public works meeting, and we had first reading at the last council meeting and recommended approval of the second reading today. It's an ordinance that deals with intense trucking activity associated with large construction projects, and the fee would be based on traffic and pavement factors relative to the construction route to get to access the site. With that, if you have any questions?
I got a copy of the ordinance this time. And Vic, did you write this, Vic?
It was a collaboration between staff and office.
Yeah, okay. I mean, I was just, how in the world can you define what this is when we talk about? The definition is heavy construction material, multiple trips. Can we put some metrics on this of some sort so that people know when they have to comply?
The determination is actually something that's made as part of the permit process. The expectation is that the engineering department will evaluate what that project is going to entail, and on that basis determine whether it actually is going to tip the scale of being a high-impact traffic or not. The staff, and I don't know if anyone wants to read.